I'm gonna go ahead and bring this special meeting of the Placerville City Council to order. It is Thursday, March 18th, and we are discussing all things recreation and parks today. And it's a nice change from some of the things that we talk about from time to time. And I want to truly express my appreciation, Mark, Steven, Kelly, for you guys. Considering to be, well, putting your name up to be considered for these positions. And supporting, you know, looking at the opportunity to support our community in this way. I know that Jackie has done it for many years. And I've appreciated her service and it's a great way to get back to our community. It's probably one of the more fun ways to do it as well, where you get to, you know, talk about a lot of fun stuff. So with that, I'm gonna get into, let's see, I actually probably should follow my agenda. Call the order, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Thomas.
Here. All right, we have no announcements to the public, and could I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move to God.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Here. All right, moving on to our next item of discussion, the discussion on Recreation and Parks Commission interviews. And here we are. I'm just gonna go ahead and read this, three candidates, Mark Sanpero, Kelly Rogers, and Steven Vance submitted applications by the final filing deadline on March 9. All candidates have been invited to participate in this public interview process with the questions posed to each candidate by the city council. Each candidate will be given sufficient time to respond to their questions. At the conclusion of this group interview, each council member will complete and prepare ballot that the city manager and city clerk will tabulate, and then report the results of the balloting at the public meeting. Each council member will vote for up to three candidates. Candidates receiving the highest number of votes for all three councilmen from all votes from at least three council members shall be appointed. And, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, the language on that agenda was taken from an older agenda when we were seeing each other in person at the town hall. So the process that we'll use tonight is, at the conclusion of the questioning of the candidates, each council member will email me their vote, and then the city manager and I will count those votes and then report out what the votes were.
I was reading that and I wasn't even thinking about it too much.
It was just, oh, no. Sorry about that.
So you heard, I'm glad you heard that, thank you very much. So what's gonna happen is, we're going to have, we're gonna ask each one of you a similar question, we'll alternate who we start with. And we'll give you plenty of time to answer the question, and their questions pertaining to, of course, Recreation and Parks Department and what your thoughts are on that. And at the conclusion, we'll go ahead and the city council will vote, there's three, you know, there's three positions open. And so we'll be voting for those three positions. The city, so we'll go ahead and just start the question, we'll alternate who starts first. So let's go ahead and start with Mark as the first person to ask the question to first, and then we'll go to Steven. And then we'll go to Kelly for, to be asked the question first. And so right now, I believe Jackie is gonna be asking the first question.
Thank you.
Yes.
So the first question is, the role of the Recreation and Parks Commissioner requires public contact. Contact, name one quality you possess that you feel is necessary to be a successful communicator.
Why don't you answer that for me? I don't know, I'm a friendly outgoing guy, you know, I met you out on the trail, you know, however long ago that was. And so I really don't know how to answer that, I just, I don't have any problems with the public, most of the public. That's it.
Great, thank you. Steven, it's the same question to you, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah, sure, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
Okay. The role of the Recreation and Park Commissioner requires public contact. Name one quality that you possess that you feel is necessary to be a successful communicator.
I'm kinda like how Mark was saying, like, it's such a small town, you know, a lot of people, right? I feel like, growing up in a small town, you really learned how to empathize with people in your community. Small town, it's kind of like a group field with a lot of things going on. I mean, we felt, you know, what COVID has done to us, we know what it feels like to be in good times when like, up there refereeing basketball game, or playing in a basketball game, or doing something, working in the city pool, whatever. I just feel like the ability to empathize and really try and understand where people are coming from, so I can clearly understand what they're saying and how they feel, and how we can work towards a goal.
Great, thank you, Steven. Kelly, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I got it. Well, I own a skateboard and snowboard shop, you know, I've owned it for almost 10 years, so that's all recreational activities, and I've gotta get to know people as soon as they walk in my door, especially if I want them to buy something. I mean, that's sort of the baseline of everything, but more importantly, I mean, I'm forging relationships daily with people who want guidance for skateboarding, for their first, for their kids for skateboard, or they wanna buy a snowboard, or they wanna just get some information on how the ski resorts are doing, I mean, whatever it may be, you know, and then my involvement with the skateboard park, of course, like, goes way back, so, and I grew up here as well. So, you know, you just talk to people as they come in, so it's really not hard for me to do that, it's pretty easy.
Great, thank you, Kelly.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Michael Saragosa will be asking the next question, so he'll be starting with Steve.
All right, well, good evening, Steve, I'll ask you the next question. And next question is, what, in your opinion, is one or two of the major issues currently impacting the city related to recreation and parks?
Um, so the last five, six years have been heavily refereeing basketball games, at least, well, since COVID hit, right? Haven't been doing that, but I would say, community input has been the number one thing that I've been told, just in how things should be run, like whether there should be rules or revisions to, and this is just the basketball league, right? But even working at the city, I mean, growing up here, I've had most of the city department or recreation department, so I feel like public input is probably the most important thing that, like, I've heard. And then the second thing, which I feel like has grown in its own way for Placerville, is like creativity and how the, and how the programs are developed and run. I've seen it transform over the years, it's gotten, you know, more modernized. And I wouldn't say it's really, that's one of my key points, because like, I feel like it attacked a problem that was there before, just kinda like, you know, you know, just trying to make things different, more exciting for kids, and trying to involve people in different community programs and such. So just continuing on with that creativity is especially gonna be really important after COVID, when people can start doing things together again.
You're muted, Mike.
Always ones, at least. Thank you, Steve. Kelly, you want me to repeat the question?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. What, in your opinion, is one of the two of the major issues currently impacting the city related to recreation and parks?
I don't know, I would say, probably funding maybe, and getting, like, I just kinda reiterate what the last guy said, is getting kids interested, or getting people interested into doing things, and the accessibility of all of that. I know for me, for skateboarding, like through COVID, like, a lot of sports are shut down, so I've seen a huge influx in like the skateboarding business. It's actually been kind of good and bad, in the sense of, you know, business is good and people are getting outside and being involved. But, and I grew up here, right, so I did play Little League here, I played in Hangtown Little League, but also those sports, like, weren't just for me, you know? It really wasn't my thing. So I think trying to get kids interested in more than just like your average team sports, and getting people outside and being active is kind of an important thing that I would see. So just the accessibility portion and involvement, maybe, those are probably the two most important things, I think.
Thank you, Kelly. Mark, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, no, I'm good, but you know, it's interesting listening to both those answers, because it was something I hadn't even thought about. When I'm thinking of parks and recs, I'm thinking literally of parks and the bike trail, not even thinking about my knowledge of sports, and the sports activity is almost zero. And so there's a problem, there's something that needs work on, my knowledge on how everything works. Beyond that, I mean, I know about the pool, my guess is, right now, getting that, coming up, making sure that pool gets open. I think it was such a shame last year to have it closed. Well, everything was closed, and it's just, and I, there may be problems in those, you know, in the group sports and stuff, but I'm totally ignorant of all that, you know, ask me about the trails, and I'll tell you how good that bike trail is, all the way, you know, down to Folsom. Or, but, and I've shit, you know, I went to all our parks the other day, there was a park I didn't even know we had, you know, that orchard park over on the other side of town. I said, wow, wow. Anyway, I don't have a good answer for you, because I, other than, there's probably a lot of issues there that I've totally overlooked, and haven't been paying attention to, because I don't play group sports, and so, not a very good answer, but it's what I got.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Just a second, if I could ask, what areas do you see, from your experience, that do or may need some?
Well, I, you know, I walk the trail from either the bus station up, I mean, six days a week, five days a week, or down, you know, down the trail by Walmart. And I think the trail up in our area really, you know, obviously, I don't know, it had, the homeless are not being visible, so visible this year, but I certainly, you know, the garbage that I see, that's just on the side of the highway, or the little, you know, up there by Smith Flat Road, where the trail kinda cuts down there, just piles of garbage. I didn't really wanna go the homeless route on this, but I see that that is an issue, and I don't, I don't know the answer, you know, I think most of us don't know the answer. And, but the parks, I went, I went by all the parks, I think it's a shame that a bathroom had to be torn down, but I understand the reasoning behind that. And I, as I said, I cruised all of our parks in the last week, and I'm really nice, they're all looking in good shape, and people were using all of them. They looked friendly, I went to Ducky Park, what we always called the Ducky Park, Lundston Park, and it was really nice out there, hadn't been out there for a while, so.
Thanks, Mark. Michael, did we hit everybody on your question?
We did.
We did.
All right, we're moving on to Karen.
All right.
And you are starting with Kelly.
Okay, Kelly. Placerville has a unique historical heritage. What facilities or recreational programs would you suggest that may highlight our unique city attributes?
The trail, you know, it's been talked about quite a bit, the trail is kind of an important part of the town, I believe. What activities could you do on that trail? I mean, the bike riding, of course, but, you know, I mean, I grew up walking without a trail and hiking and running around this town, so. I don't know, you know, I think that would be, I don't really, can you repeat that question again? I kinda got the first part, but.
Placerville has a unique historical heritage. What facilities or recreational programs would you suggest that may highlight our unique city attributes?
Yeah, like I said, the trail, kinda, you know, focusing on the Gold Rush portion of the history of our town and the county. Now, that's what's always intrigued me about this area, is the Gold Rush itself, right? There's a lot of cool things out there, but I think the trail is such a main artery from east to west, you know, you can implement a lot of different things out there, whether it's, you know, walking groups, just getting people outside in general, walking, and, you know, with the days of technology, perhaps you could, you could get, you know, walking tours with an app of some sort, I don't know, there's this kind of, there's really all kinds of ideas that could be tossed around about that. But I do think the trail is probably a huge portion of that.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mark, would you like me to repeat the question?
Um, no, I'm good, I think, you know, within reason and budgets, I've always, I would like to see placards, I'd like to see placards on the trail, if, you know, I don't, you know, right there downtown where the auto shop is, used to be the train turnaround, there used to be a turnstile there. I think, you know, something that would indicate that, I think that, you know, the fact that kids used to ride, you know, the engineer would pay them 10 cents to ride up the engine with them and, you know, turn the train around. And all the way up to Camino, I mean, I'm not sure if, where the Pony Express came down as it relates to where the trail is, but there's all sorts of, like, I agree with, you know, Kelly, there's history on that trail and information that could be, because, you know, obviously, I could, yeah, we need a new improved rec call with, you know, museum, but we don't have any money for that. But I think placards is something that can be done. I don't know the history of our local parks, and that certainly could be, there's always a sign there saying who was named after, but maybe more information for that. But I think the easy way is just placards and let people know what was here and what happened. You know, to highlight the good stuff that happened in our area and our city.
All right, thank you. And Steven, you're up next, would you like me to repeat the question?
That's good, thank you, though. Yeah, to Kelly's point, that trail is, everybody I talk to from out of town talks about that trail, everybody does. And it's a really good highlight, and I really like Mark's idea too about, you know, placing placards up there, I mean, like, history's what really draws people over here. You know, it's like, when I'm talking to people remotely for work, and they ask where I'm from, and I tell them, oh, from where the Gold Rush started, and they're just like, what? And it's just a total draw. So embracing that, I noticed, just in the past, just growing up here, like, people really loved the reenactment activities that people have done, like, when the horse carriage is here, and they take you around Placerville, like, I gotta show them around on the street, you know, where everything is, kids seem to love that. Just embracing the history has been a pretty cool draw, as far as like, you know, like, why I wanted to come back here, after living out of town for about six years, so it's nice to come back and be a part of the community and just kind of appreciate Placerville on a different level. Because like, as a kid, I was more interested in activities rather than the history, so it's, um, I would just say, sorry, I got a little sidetracked, but going back to the main question, I would say just embracing the history with activities and making it engaging, like, that could really speak to what activity highlights what Placerville's history is about.
All right, thank you.
Sorry for the tangent.
Dennis, you're muted.
You're muted.
That's okay, thank you. Well, we're on a roll tonight, aren't we? I think that's three for four, three for five so far. Well, thank you, that tangent was great, because it gives us a little more insight into your thinking on parks and, you know, recreation and parks. Everybody wants to, I wanna call it Parks Rec all the time, and that's a challenge. Next up is Patty, and she'll be starting with Mark.
Thank you, Dennis, and if you guys don't mind, I'd like to add one little thing to my question that's not on our agenda.
You go, Patty.
Okay. And I start with Mark, you said?
Yes.
Okay, Mark, explain your understanding of the role of a Recreation and Parks Commissioner as it relates to the city council. And then my added question is gonna be, I haven't heard any of you talk about Gold Bug Park. And in my thoughts, that's probably one of the greatest assets we have in our park system, and I'm wondering how you feel about that. So I'll go back if you want me to.
No, I'm good, I like Gold Bug Park, how's that? I noticed you raised the rates for the tours on your, I was reading your agendas from last year, the four meetings that the committee had. My understanding is, it's, we are a kind of a buffer, I don't know if that's the right word, between the, I don't know, between this, between the staff and the city council, that things that are related to Parks and Rec, or Recreation and Parks, will come to this committee first for, does it meet the criteria, does it, should it be passed on to the city council? Or should people presenting stuff coming to us be sent back for more work? I mean, it's kinda like the Planning Commission, but less intense. And just getting and feeding information to this, from the city council for whatever comes up. And I, it's like I said, I was reading the, it looks like, from the four meetings that had last year, most of the stuff was city-generated. It wasn't coming from outside, you know, this needing to raise the fees out of Gold Bug Park, or needing to raise the fees for the adult and youth leagues.
The program.
So, and then coming, going, either agreeing or disagreeing with staff reports, and then passing, you know, passing that on to the city council.
Okay, thank you, good answer. Is Kelly next, Dennis? You're muted.
Steve is next.
Okay, Steve, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, thanks.
Okay. Explain your understanding of the role of a Recreation and Parks Commissioner as it relates to the city council? And then I added your feelings about Gold Bug Park.
Yeah, make sure you repeat that. I, yeah, I haven't, first, I haven't been to Gold Bug Park since I was a kid, so I need to, I need to get back over there, but I remember being a blast. But as far as the role that we play, from how I understand it, you know, we're, we're kind of like a, I wouldn't say a tertiary, like, buffer between, but what Mark said, like, kind of like a buffer, like, giving perspective towards the Recreation and Parks Department, you know, like, how does this benefit the community, like, how does this leverage what we already have, so we don't have to recreate the wheel? You know, and whether that be different policies around, like, you know, pay increases, or fee increases, like, around, you know, whether it be for the pool, for the parks, tours and such. I feel like that all has to be taken into consideration for how is this gonna benefit in the long term, especially with such a heavy hit from COVID, just almost wiping everybody in the area out, you know? So, yeah, just acting as that, and Mark got to piggyback off your answer, it was a good answer, but, yeah, we're essentially there to just, yeah, just remind them that this is a priority for the city.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Kelly.
No, it's okay, I got it, I'm just gonna basically reiterate what I just heard, I mean, I kinda didn't really know what the committee was all about, but, I mean, I had a general idea based on my experience on the skate park advisory committee, because we kinda did the same things, talk about what kind of we could do with the skate park, what we couldn't do with the skate park, and then that would go to the CIO of the county, and then maybe to the Board of Supervisors if necessary. So I guess we're just a liaison between the committee, think tank, maybe, and to you guys, to bring forward ideas that might, as was stated before, benefit the community and keep the ball rolling. And in terms of Gold Bug Park, yeah, I mean, that's like near in my heart, because as a kid, there wasn't much to do in this town. So you'd go walk around town all day, and Gold Bug Park was always a place you could go to. And I went there last year, I think, and it was fun, it was, it was nice and nostalgic, it could use some improvements, I think, but, you know, Placerville is very unique, and it has a unique history, and we're going through a lot of changes right now, but we always are gonna have the Gold Rush portion of the history of this town, and Gold Bug is a huge portion of that. So putting that forward more on the map and getting that more involved could be a great idea, of course, I think, I think that'd be cool.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right.
After you.
All right, thank you very much. Oh, I'm not muted.
Yay.
Well, I'm really selling myself out there. So, so going back to, I have a kind of a wrap-up question, and at the same time, if there's anything that you would like to share with us in terms of your perspective, your history, your experience, what you're bringing to the table, I would encourage you to do that, now would be a good time. And then I also would like to ask, and I'm gonna go ahead and start with, who did we start with last, with Steven, didn't we? So we're gonna go ahead and start with Kelly. And then the question I have for you is, it's gonna take somewhere between three and seven hours a month, or whenever we have a meeting, because we don't have a meeting every month all the time. But it's gonna take somewhere between seven, three and seven hours a month to do that, and to have these meetings on a Wednesday afternoon. Is that something that you can commit to? And then if there's anything else that you would like to share with us, that would be your time to do that.
Yeah, of course, I can commit to three to seven hours a month, I mean, yeah, it's a small commitment. I mean, I committed to the skateboard park for years, long before I owned the shop. The shop, owning the shop came secondary, okay? So my experience with recreation in the town is a little bit different in the sense that I was a skateboarder on the streets, getting tickets and getting hassled and chased off of everywhere, you know, until, of course, we got a skateboard park, and then that thing nosedived, and we had to get in there and save that, we had to learn politics, basically, we had to learn how the system worked. You know, it wasn't just to say, hey, this is what we want, we want it now, kind of thing, that's not how anything works, and we quickly had to figure that out. So I think, I, you know, I have in contact with a lot of people, I know a lot of people, I know a lot of young people. I think that I can definitely, and I've been here forever as well, I mean, I've been here since I was four years old, so I just know this town, I mean, I know it's heartbeat, I mean, I'm in it every day, whether it's the kids on skateboards or bikes or scooters, or people riding by every day on their bikes. You know, I'm in a little bit on the kinda outside of the downtown, so it's a little bit different down there, it's a little bit more crusty sometimes, but I kinda like that, you know? So that doesn't really bother me, I kinda learn to vibe with the homeless people a little bit, you know? I don't, that's just my experience, you know, based on just being here, and I learned a lot being part of the skateboard park, and when I had a business there, that was challenging as well. So I enjoyed outdoor recreation myself all the time, so I know that, I think if we get together with some good people, there's, we could all accomplish some cool things and progress this town forward in the way that I, and I think some others think that it should go.
Thank you. And then, Mark?
Okay, hang on, let me, what was the question? I know, so, a little bit about my background, unlike these other fellows, I have only been here since 2002, although I've been buying cars here since 1986, when Stancels was there. I have had experience, I just came, I spent the last two years on the Board of Directors of the Eldorado National Forest Interpretive Association. I'm a docent at Carson Pass, I'm a volunteer for the McCallum Wilderness, so I spend a lot of time outdoors. I was on a city council many years ago, I know that process of this, we were small, we didn't have any committees, we did everything, we, but, okay, now I'm drifting, experience, what was the other, what was?
So, so the commitment, the time.
Oh, the commitment, yeah, the commitment, yeah. I, the commitment, especially, you know, I was talking to Jackie, who said, under normal circumstances, you know, it's about 10 meetings a year, skipping July and December, obviously, last year it was four meetings. So, yeah, I mean, the commitment is not a problem for me, I'm retired, my wife is trying to get me to do things.
I like you had, you had to look over your shoulder.
Yeah, yeah. She can hear me, she can't hear you.
Where were you on city council?
Amateur city. Smallest city in California, I think if you live there, you have to be on the city council, it's a rule, you know? But I was appointed to a two-year term, and I got elected to a four-year, but then I moved, so I was on there for four years. It was fun, I mean, and you guys noted, even for the small, you know, I always tell people, we had two employees and a budget of $100,000 a year, but still to do your job, your job, your five job, it's a lot of work, it's, you know?
Yep.
I don't envy you guys.
Yeah, here we are.
Yeah, here you are, two meetings this week, another one, you know, Tuesday.
Yeah, we have one tomorrow, too.
Yeah, I know, that's what I mean.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, we keep, well, well, Councilman Sarah Goza and I left a meeting to come to this one. So I'm going to move on to Stephen.
Yeah, yeah, three, seven hours a month, that's not, yeah, that's not bad for me. I'd definitely be more than happy to do it. I, I'm usually pretty busy doing a lot of things, whether it be like, pulling extra jobs, or, I used to coach basketball back in the day for the city of Plasterville, for youth leagues, so that was really fun. Just some way to like, get involved, and trying to do something where I'm like, okay, like, how can I, like, give back some time? Because I don't really work, like, Kelly, it's so cool that you get to work directly with the community. Like, I wish I could do something like that, it's fun. So just finding an outlet to, to do something where I can connect with the community to raise me, and I'd like to, you know, pay it forward, and do something that, you know, do something that, that has a vision. And, you know, having worked in the pool, scorekeeping, softball, refing basketball, coaching, playing here, like, all these things, it's, it's definitely a draw to come back and be a part of that. And having, yeah, having grown up here, I just wanted to be a part of something that has a new vision for Plasterville. I love, I love it the way it is. I want to, I want to keep the history of Plasterville at the focal point of everything, but what can we evolve around that, to make it a draw for the community to get oriented with being involved again? Because we've all been isolated for a year. I'm, only thing that's really saved my wife and I right now is this Eldorado Trail, running and biking on it when we can. I mean, she's pregnant now, so we can't really bike. But it's, yeah, just, love to continue to try and do something to be involved.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. And I, and again, I want to express my appreciation for all of you being here. And I have to say, I really appreciate the synergy you guys have, just talking back and forth amongst you on this interview process. It's, it's refreshing to hear and see that. So I, you know, I think that's kind of a cool part. So, at this point, the City Council, we're going to mute our screens, and we're going to, so, first of all, there's, there's three seats. Two of the seats are full-term. One of the seats is a short-term seat. And so, Mark had requested that he be considered for that seat. So as we, as we look at that, you might want to indicate, Mark, for that seat. And so, we're going to, we're going to step back, we're going to send an email to Regina, I guess Regina and Cleve. How's that sound? Nobody's.
You, you can just send it to Regina, and I will go in her office, and I'll collect them there and tell them.
So we'll send, we'll send one to Regina, and she'll tabulate, she'll come back out, and share the results. All right. And so, we'll be right back, gentlemen.
Thank you, Cleve. So, we have all five members here. Okay, so, thank you, everyone, for voting. Each council member voted the same, for, they voted for all three of you candidates, Mark, Stephen, and Kelly, and voted for Mark to serve in the two-year, unexpired term. So, congratulations.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And you know, as, as we, council members get elected, and we move into our positions, we don't fully understand the breadth and width of everything that we're dealing with, as a council member, whether it's the, the roads, the sewer system, the water system, believe me, there's a lot that we go into note. And to me, it's really about the heart, your heart, and your passion for supporting our communities. And so, as you move forward, I'm sure you'll, you'll learn a lot more about our parks, and probably more than you want to know at some point. And, and I look forward to seeing what you guys do. There's plenty of opportunities to look at expanding, or, we're finding ways to bring our community together in different ways. You know, funding is always a challenge in the Recreation and Parks Department. Fundraising is always an opportunity that can help bring some, some people together, and find ways to engage our community. So I look forward to, to you guys serving and hearing what you guys do. And I want to express my appreciation, again, for you guys stepping up and supporting our community.
All right, thank you.
You bet. And so, yes. Is everybody good?
Yep.
All right, then, from that, from this point, we're going to adjourn the meeting, and hope everybody has a good, a good evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations. Thank you for serving.
All right, thank you.